The nine AM session of Roanoke City Council for August 5th, 2024 is hereby called the Order, and I'll ask our Clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the role.
Mr. Bobison?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Point?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here, and I call him as present. And I'm pleased to recognize that City Planning Commission are with us today, and by the look of your looks on your face, it seems like you all enjoy being here today, so thank you being with us. And I'm going to ask the Secretary to please call the role for the Planning Commission.
Thank you, and Ms. Atwood?
Here.
Mr. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Glenn?
Here.
And Mr. Martin?
Here.
And Mr. Chair Cavler, the District Council, their best today. I have to see Mr. Cavler.
Okay, well, thank you, and I want to welcome you all again, and I'm going to have just a few opening remarks, and then I'll ask Chairman Martin if he would have any open remarks, but thank you all for coming here. Let me just say this, you're a very important part of what we do, and we try to meet with many of our, all of our groups as much as we can, but your role is important, and I know Ms. Gray, Ms. Chittam, and everybody, the staffs, thank you all for what you do, and we hope we can have a good discussion this morning about things that go on. And I know sometimes, over the year, we've had some issues and got issues coming up, but thank you all for your service and your commitment, and what you all may hear or get, we get it double, so, but thank you for being here, and thank you for what you're doing, and I look forward to working with you with the time that we have left. So, Mr. Martin, any opening remarks or comments that you'd like to have?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, first and foremost, I would like to thank you for your service to the city. I feel as though it's going to be a loss when you retire. You've had many years of direction in your role as mayor, and we very much appreciate what you've done for our city. Mr. Cobb is running for mayor, and your shoes are tough to fill, but we're confident that if elected, he can do the job as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Also, I would like to start out by saying that it would be impossible for us to do what we do without the exemplary work of Roanoke City staff. I was a part of Planning Commission training many years ago, and there are so many communities that don't have the quality of staff that we have, or in fact, don't have any staff to help them with decisions. They do so much of the work for us, they help assounding boards, they give us perspectives, they collect all the information, they just do an exceptional job, and the work that we do is made possible by what they do, so thank you for that. And that is it for now for opening remarks. I know we have things we need to discuss a little bit later on. It's been a fun year for the Roanoke Planning Commission, so I'm looking forward to further debriefing on that.
Great, well, thank you. And we'll go through some items, and then I'll give everybody, at least my council colleagues, an opportunity to share, and we both want to have a good exchange while we're here, and so I'm going to call on you to just go over the agenda items or introduce the agenda items that we want to discuss this morning.
Well, since I have the microphone, which is not, is it working now? I'll go first. So, the agenda items don't really have anything other than just an exchange of information and points of view and thoughts about the jobs that we do, and I would like to hear from you if there's anything that we're not doing that might facilitate your job in making the political decisions, since, in fact, we're a recommending body, we're not an approval body, so we make the recommendation, and you all get to say whether it's going to be approved or not. So, in one sense, there are no political repercussions for what we recommend, but there are for you. So, to the extent that we can facilitate your job and help you make easier decisions, we'd like to do that. Also, with the year that we have had, the very first meeting that I had the opportunity to chair after taking, filling Ms. Glenn's impossible shoes to fill, she did such a fantastic job for us for two years. The first job I had was to chair the Evan Spring Meeting, which was a fun one, so that was one that everybody, I think, had a chance to study for many, many months and to make a very tough decision on. So, I wanted to commend City Council for the times that it's very difficult to look after the needs of the entire city as opposed to the needs of a vocal minority of neighbors who support or favor a certain position on it. It's part of the at-large, I guess, network that we have here in the city as opposed to what they have in Roanoke County, but I wanted to thank you for that as well.
At-large is much better.
All right. And so, that was the, that was the main thing I wanted to say, was express gratitude for you all when you do that. I will ask other members if they'd like to chime in as well on it.
Mr. Cattell, Mr. Gray?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm going to call on Ms. Chittam to just provide any insight or anything that he wants to share with us.
So, you have at your places the report on the activities of the Commission over the past year. We did have, of course, a couple notable items, but I think in terms of rezonings, there were one or, just one or two that garnered a lot of public sentiment, but I will say most of it flowed smoothly and was well done. And as Mr. Martin said, we did our best to prepare the Commission in their decision-making with reports and understanding where the decision was, all the things that we must consider in making recommendations, so kudos to the rest of the staff for doing all that preparation. So, I think this morning, what I'll, if there are no questions about the activities of the Commission throughout the year, I will jump into the briefing on the zoning amendments, if that's such a...
Ms. Moon, then? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chittam, although you gave us the FY24 annual report up here on the dais, would you make sure the Clerk gets it for the agenda to be approved at the next council meeting? So, it will be in the record, the annual report that you've given, would you make sure? Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so, just to get everybody up to speed, we, this, I'm going to talk a little bit about where we are. My presentation's going to take somewhere between 15 and 20 minutes, left plenty of time for your discussion, your questions. We presented in your package a lot of information for your weekend reading, and so I'm glad to walk through some of that and to respond to questions if there are, assuming that there will be, and how we arrived at some of our conclusions in that report. So, where we are now, we have, over the past years, we've, of course, had a Conference of Plan that we adopted in 2020, we've had a housing plan that we had done by RKG Associates in 2020, and also in 2021, we have Virginia Tech do a study on eviction prevention, which had a lot of background information about our housing picture, and all of these kind of are pushing us in the, in the, in the direction of what became the zoning amendments that we are, have on our table right now. So, March 2024, on the 18th, Majority City Council did adopt the recommended amendments that were recommended by staff and then by way of the Planning Commission to City Council. A month later, roughly, a lawsuit was issued or filed to challenge the adoption of these. I believe in every instance of adopting these types of reforms, that localities have had lawsuits filed, and so there was a resolution that City, my majority of City Council passed on June 17th, and to reinitiate the process, go through a process that would culminate with readoption, and work with the City Attorney's Office on the exact terminology that we'd be in your, in your ordinance, to reconsider, basically reaffirm, the council commitment to these amendments that occurred on March 18th, 2024. I will, it's important to note that the amended code, your vote on March 18th, is still in effect. I think it was reported when you took your action on June 17th, unfortunately, that it was reported by several media outlets that City Council had repealed them. They've not been repealed, they are in effect today, and in fact, people are going under those assumptions as of when they develop property. And so, the zoning amendments report and this, this presentation were transmitted to you last week for your initial review. We are, we have placed at your place up there a revision with the corrections, because it's a pretty lengthy report, and we'll be refining that up until adoption, I would imagine, so, as there are questions that arise. And so, the effects, bottom line here, we'll get to, we'll skip to the end, the effects that we see, we project from this are, are going to be incremental, slow, and very moderate. And even though, over the short term, we're looking at just about 40 units per year, probably many, much less, over the long term, this will have benefit to Roanoke. So, getting into the, and I won't go too much into the technical points here, but basically what we did is, in all of our districts from R12, R7, R5, R3, and RM1, all of those districts only allow by right, single-family housing. And what we did in all those districts is made it so that you can have multiple, either two or more, depending on what zone you're in. So, one thing we did not do that our other peer localities in Virginia have done is just kind of do it across the board. We proposed and you adopted a, what I'll call a progressive approach, which allows interior, it matters because you have interior lots, these are ones that are just simply not corner lots, and then you have corner lots. Corner lots have additional frontage on the street. So, on corner lots, we allow in R12, which is our kind of a low-density district, up to three units. Interior lots stayed the same, there's no change, one unit. And then, as we progress through the districts and that are increasingly more dense, we allowed more and more units. And so, again, through all those, we distinguished between the interior lot and the corner lot, and the corner lots presumably being able to accommodate more density. They are often larger for, for as long as people have been dividing up land, you know, 100 years ago, tended to make corner lots larger in the first place, just to provide that additional kind of back off of the set street. So, another thing we did for each different type of housing, when I talk about type of housing, I'm talking about a single unit, a two-unit, a townhouse, multifamily, all that, those are the types that we, so for each one of these types, we've adopted design considerations that kind of control the max width and height, whether there's a porch or not, to help these new units fit into existing neighborhood contexts, because that's where we're talking about. We don't have any, we don't have much at all vacant land that you can go out and, so we're looking at infill situations for 99% of this. So, again, this was an amendment of the text only, there was no amendment to the map, there was, it was something, that action implemented a lot of the content of the Conference of Plan that City Council adopted, removed some major barriers for the private sector to develop housing, and then also, just another limitation here is that the market will determine how, 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 how much redevelopment occurs, and so, and also, lot size, how the lot is situated, obviously, and the topography that we deal with a lot in town will also determine how lots get redeveloped. So, the community engagement process started back in 2018. We can't discount all that occurred that went into the Conference of Plan. We started working on the Conference of Plan in 2018, we continued heavy community engagement for the three years that led up to its adoption in December of 2020. We had a first set of amendments, zoning amendments that occurred in 2021, we had a pretty significant engagement process with that set of amendments. These being more significant in their content, we did an even greater community engagement process, starting back in the fall of 2023. So, what we did, as we kicked this off, before we had made any decisions or recommendations about the little code items that we were going to address, we went out to the communities through all the libraries and had open houses, so that people could just come up and, and have a chat, and not, and not being in a, you know, in front of a large crowd or anything like that, which is a pretty low-key, easy access for most people, and kind of discuss how it affects them, and I think that's an important part of the process. What we did is we rolled out, you know, here's our situation, here's what our Comprehensive Plan talks about, here's what these housing plans are telling us, and here's, here are some of the ideas that we're considering. Again, we did not have drafted these text amendments yet, so we took that, that we consolidated all the information from these six different workshops, in addition to what we were getting online in terms of surveys, people sending emails and letters and things like that, and then we went, then we went to work drafting the actual zoning text amendments, and so we worked through that through, over the course of the November, December, January, and at that point, we had a pretty good idea of what we would like to roll out to the public. Meanwhile, you recall that we were briefing the City Council, we were briefing Planning Commission all along the way periodically, so we could understand and kind of get confirmation that, hey, this is the, this is the engagement process that we plan on using, and to get some validation from council on that process. So, and I think we did that in February, and in February, indeed, we started another round of six meetings, plus a virtual meeting, and at the libraries, in neighborhoods, getting out, and so there we were talking about, again, the ideas still there behind it, but also the specific amendments and how the zoning code was proposed to be changed. And then, so we wrapped that process up, we made some refinements, and this was a pretty lengthy code amendment, and then we got, you know, Planning Commission, we recommended to them that set of amendments, they concurred, a majority concurred, and then it went to City Council, March 18th. So, you know, just to summarize what's going on with the engagement process, we have, we chosen all of the above process. We chose to provide as many different avenues for people to get involved, and so we had abundant media coverage. I think I counted before March 18th, we had 18 different stories that occurred in print, online, the television news, I think both SLS and WDBJ all picked up multiple stories. So, this was out in the community, people did know about it who choose to, you know, pay attention to the news, and so that was definitely out there, and so, and then we had very, very good turnout for the meetings. You know, it's kind of like a, kind of like a baseball game, you have a lot of them, and through the course of a season, you have a lot of people attend a baseball game, but some of the, you know, you just don't see many people in the stands sometimes, but so we, you know, we had anywhere from, you know, six people sometimes to 30, 35 people come out to some of these, so it varied from, from, from one to the next. So, getting into some of the nuts and bolts, again, going back to 20, the City Plan 2040, we had, there's a lot of content that we cite as, as the background. In essence, when City Council adopted that plan, they were saying that we're going to do this, we're going to make the changes, not only just to zoning, but to other changes to improve our housing affordability picture in the city. But first, you got to get out of the way, right? And so, the first piece was to remove the zoning barriers that we have in place to housing development, to housing affordability. Important points that you will gain, if you really dig into that 2021 eviction prevention study, is that we have a mismatch in the city, a pronounced mismatch, and the shortages are at the very low income level and at the, at the, what I'll call market rate, which is not low income at all, it's 80%, 80% and more of median income, and the greatest shortage is at the higher end. So, what's going on is that people at these higher ends, who can afford all the different housing in the city, are going down into the more affordable units and kind of renting, you know, leasing them up, and so they're just not available to other parts of the population. It's complicated to understand, but it was eye-opening for me, I just hadn't, hadn't had no idea. And then, the folks who were at the lower end of income, there's a shortage there, so they have to go to the higher levels, higher rent levels that they may not be able to afford, and so that's why we see what we call cost burdening, where we have a lot of people who are paying 30% or more for their housing costs of their income, and a lot, or way too many are paying 50% or more of their income for housing. So, those folks are in pretty dire straits if they get a flat tire, or the car breaks down, or something, or there's a medical bill, and so that's why it was important to have that discussion about eviction, and we had that study done, because they're pretty close, they're very vulnerable to that. But it all boils down to a shortage in certain sectors of our housing, and so, and then, here's the bottom line here, all new housing development in the city is helpful throughout the entire market, low, for low-income, medium, all the way through, so more is better. So, even the apartments that are going out on 460, that might be leasing for $1,400 a month, will help, they will be helpful to Roanoke's housing picture, because it will pull people out of those units that other people need that are lower rents, so. Increased supply will stabilize the market. We've got a, we've got a situation of scarcity, and that just drives prices up, and it's not just Roanoke, everybody's seen that too. So, we had a lot of things that occurred after the recession that made, made developers stop building as much housing as it's, as it's needed to accommodate the population of the United States. Again, that's, that's here, that's here in Roanoke, that's in a lot of cities. So, one thing we've been able to do since you first, you first adopted it, I think my first projection was that we would, we would start generating about 50 additional units per year as a result of these amendments. We've, we've since refined that and built a model based on what we know about some actual experience and some projections from other localities, both here in Virginia and elsewhere. It's, it's in that, we've documented that in the report. We're seeing a range out there of about 15 to 45 units per year, and all these are in very, very high-demand areas. So, so we chose, just to be, you know, conservative, let's, let's look at, you know, the higher end of that range. What we're now projecting is about 40 units per year. This is spread across the entire geography of the city of Roanoke, and so it is truly something that you probably will not even notice in an individual neighborhood. It's just, again, it's spread it, spread out, it's, it's diffused, and so, the, in fact, the impact over a year is barely noticeable. Just for comparison, just for comparison, last year, we did 98 single-dwelling houses. We're at 78 right now, so, I mean, back, we're looking at far less than, than those numbers. And so, we built this model, it's in a spreadsheet, I will freely share it, but what we did is we used a, used a formula to say that over 30 years, about 2% of our city will shift to some higher density allowed under, under the amendments, so. Actual experience, since, since March, we've had, that would be four and a half months of experience. We have three applications that would generate five additional units. So, we're looking, if you just projected that, we'd look at, we'd be at 15 per year. So, we're far lower than that 40 right now, far lower, and so, those are, I think those are, have been permitted and are maybe not yet under construction. So, looking at, you know, looking at how, what's our density picture, what does it look like to, 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 how are our neighborhoods, you know, what is the density? So, what we see in R12 is that, and really all of our different districts that are, that are real off of R12, R7, R5, R3, and RM1, we're at about 30% of what those allowed prior to, prior to March 18th, only about 40% and, and at the most. So, and then what you see when you're able to apply these, these additional 1,195 units over 30 years, over 30 years, is that our density pop increases a tiny, tiny bit. Those numbers are in the report, they go up by a tenth of a percent in different zones, and so the, the impact on density, again, spread over the entire geography of the city, barely noticeable in terms of what we're seeing. We talk a lot in the report about equity and the exclusionary effects of our zoning ordinance as it existed prior to March 18th. This was, there's a lot of content in our Comprehensive Plan about this. We knew, we know that it has been, it has had these exclusionary effects, and indeed, we call it exclusionary zoning, and what we did on March 18th was repeal that, that situation that we had in place virtually since the 1930s. We are not the only ones, we've provided some background about where zoning came from, we talk about the awful path that we have of redlining, of segregation, straight-up segregation ordinances, of restrictive covenants, and, and zoning, if you go back and look at the exclusionary zoning, if you go back and look at the origins of it, and you don't need to take my word for it, there are a lot of scholars that, that know and have, have done the research, that this is a, this is a tool of segregation. And, and that's, that's, I think, an important part, and I, I think that we need to keep that in mind, even if we want to argue about, will it create enough affordable housing, or what it will do to our housing picture, I think that reason alone is plenty. Again, we, just going back there, we cite all the stuff out of our Comprehensive Plan. We knew this, we know this, and, and we took the courageous step of ridding ourselves of this on March 18th. Population change, just looking at how many people, we can, we, what we'd end up projecting is households. Roanoke has had a pretty steady household size of 2.25 people, so just projecting that, we're looking at about 3,000 people added to the population over 30 years, over 30 years, so less than 1,000, and so this, again, would be unnoticed, our population has, in 1976, I believe, was at 105, so we've been much larger than the... So we've been much larger than the scale of increase. Looked at what that would create for, you know, impact on schools. Again, just assuming that the households stayed the same size, that they had, people had the same number of children, which we don't think they're going to, but if they did, we'd project about fifteen additional school-aged children in our schools, hardly noticeable. This is the variant, they have a larger variance from year to year, just naturally. Looked, reached out to the water authority, no problem, they have plenty of additional capacity for us to handle water, sanitary sewer. Eleven thousand vehicle trips that might be created by these folks is, again, spread across the entire geography of the city, would not be noticed. It sounds like a lot, but that is a small number when it comes to traffic management, spread over a network. And then, we, you know, of course, our parks and rec facilities can handle, I think we've got eighty parks in the city, they're distributed around the city. This level of population increase could easily be handled by this, especially over the course of thirty years, if there's adjustment that needs to be made. Occupancy types, there's a discussion about, well, will this create a lot more renters? Well, I doubt this would, but the trend is that even with exclusionary zoning in place, more renters are, more houses, more households are renting. That's just the case in urban areas. If you go look at Richmond, you go look at Norfolk, you go look at all the urban areas of Virginia, they all have a majority of renters, and often by a large margin. So, we don't think that exclusionary zoning, one way or the other, really will have a whole lot of impact on that. Again, forty units per year, there are other things out there, we know that the cost of housing has a far greater influence. Another thing, just to note, that sixteen-hundred-and-thirty households out there that own their housing aren't living in a single detached dwelling. They're living in a condo, or apartment building, or townhouse of some sort. So, other than these single detached dwellings. And then a third of renters do live in housing that is in a single detached dwelling. So the whole idea of owner-occupied, single-family housing is kind of upended by some of that Neighborhood traffic, we look at residential streets, and they can have a, they will have capacity at the low end of a thousand vehicles per day, two thousand at the high end. And depending on who you ask, I mean, our street design and subdivision ordinance kick in to a higher grade or wider street at fifteen hundred vehicles. We ran some figures on three or four different streets, and we stopped, because we're not, even with the full build-out, full build-out, which we're unlikely to ever get on a street, we never get close to the capacity of that street. We look at not only the vehicles per day, but the peak hour vehicles, and so, we just don't get anywhere near it, and so, we know that that's, you know, will there be more traffic? Sure. If, you know, if a kid down the street gets a driver's license, there'll be more traffic. So, I mean, there are different, there are a lot of variables here that add or subtract from the traffic on a street, and what's down the other, on either side of the street. But these changes unlikely to ever overtax a residential street. On street parking, one of the things we did back in twenty-twenty-one is get rid of our minimum parking requirements. Developers know how much parking to provide, we don't need to tell them. And often, we would provide, we would require developers to put in far more parking than they really needed. And indeed, we can all go around the city and see parking lots that are very empty most of the time. So we were kind of getting ourselves into paving too much. So we think that has a lot of benefit. However they do provide the parking, developers will, even if you don't make them do it. The three permits that we have were what I'll call missing middle housing, that have been pulled since March eighteenth, all provided parking off the street, on the property, even when they didn't have to, they just did. And so, it's just some other items about, because this has been a big issue with on-street parking. None of us has exclusive use to on-street parking. It's there if it's there, right? And it might be available in front of your house, or you might have to park in front of the neighbor's house, but it doesn't belong to anybody. And so, we do have some very, we do have some congested streets in town. I live on one of them. Old Southwest probably has the greatest concentration, there are three streets over there that I have driven a lot over the past few months to kind of observe what's going on. My observation is that even the really congested streets have about twenty-five percent vacancy, or seventy-five percent occupancy. And this is, we're looking at when everybody's home at like seven PM in those areas. And so, we think that, again, the scale of change is so small that it's unlikely to affect on-street parking at all, to the extent that anyone would notice. And, you know, I think there's a lot of discussion about the worst-case scenarios. Again, thinking about that, and the fact that developers want to ensure that their tenants have access to parking that they need, just as a marketability standpoint, we just don't think it's helpful to talk about the worst-case scenarios, where, you know, somebody develops all four corners in a neighborhood, and they never provide any parking. I mean, that, you know, we can all think about worst-case scenarios, but it's just not, that's just so unlikely to occur. Could it happen? Sure. And that would result in some mal inconvenience, quite frankly. Assessments and property values, bottom line here, we're, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, what's this impact on property values when you increase the capacity of a property? In general, it's any capacity, when you rezone to commercial or industrial from residential, certainly the value of that property, because its development options increase, right? And what happens here, there's an interesting idea about, well, you know, if you do that to one property, and then one property has a relative advantage to the property sitting next door, that's true. When you do it to all the properties, when you apply increases in the developability of a piece of property to all the properties in the city, then it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And here's the other important part, and my friend Casey Bratton just confirmed this and pointed this bit of wisdom out to me, that unless the market, unless it changes the market, and the actual, what people are willing to pay for properties, that's how your assessment gets set, not by speculation. It's determined by sales that occur, actual sales that actually occur in the neighborhood, and so they will adjust accordingly. So, that's an important point to keep. The zoning itself is unlikely to have any impact on assessments in the city. Environmental concerns, I've used this before, but the Sierra Club is a great resource for us to understand the superiority, from an environmental standpoint, of infill development in an existing urban-built environment. You're using existing streets, you're using the existing utilities, you're using the existing bus transit routes, you're, I mean, and all these things are important, and they make it much better environmentally than going out to the edge of the suburbs and developing. Because if you have to have more housing, you have to put it somewhere, right? And putting it in the existing context of the city, which is already developed out, we have all our streets in, we really don't develop more streets, don't need to. Getting more development out of that existing infrastructure is environmentally superior on all accounts. And the Sierra Club has a wonderful document that walks through all the reasons why. So, that's our view on that. To some extent, they did a lot of our work for us. Blight reduction, here's what I really look forward to. I am hoping that by making a blighted house, a house that is not maintained, maybe not occupied, boarded up, for many years in these, in our neighborhoods, they have had one option for redevelopment. And we can see that it's not very motivating, if you will, to go to, you can renovate it, and you can have a single dwelling. We believe that allowing additional units in either a new building or renovated building will get some of these buildings off the dime, and also will get some of our vacant lots. There often, we have to go tell the owner to cut them, and keep them mowed, or redo it, motivate these owners to do something with these properties, and get them back into productive use for housing that people need, right? So, we think additional development capacity will do nothing but help with that. We talked about the objections to the zoning amendments, defer to the preferences of specific neighborhoods to wish to maintain single-family zoning, changing neighborhood character, poor-quality rental, asking us to delay them, which is kind of a moot point, because they are in effect right now. So I think that's important. And conduct more research and more public outreach. We go through, kind of address, to the extent that we can, especially in the report in detail, about how we respond to each one of these. Important thing to think about with zoning is that, you know, whatever you do in an RM-1 zone, you can't vary that from neighborhood to neighborhood. You know, it's got to be, all the R-12 districts have all the same regulations, all the R-7 districts have all the same regulations. So we really don't vary that by neighborhood. That does get you into a map amendment, and indeed, we did a lot of those back in two thousand and five. The zoning amendments, they provide an incremental step forward. It gives us, we hope, we can get a couple of years of experience to see how what we believe are modest increases in density will perform. Right now, we're looking at fifteen, we're projecting forty, so we need some experience with this. And I'll just note that this is not risky. We have exemplary neighborhoods in Roanoke that have great character, and are wonderful places to live, that have these types of housing in them. And, you know, you can just go out and look, we can all go out and look, and see that these neighborhoods are performing well, they're resilient, they performed very well during the recession, when they have different housing types and different housing options available in them. Again, we just did even more studying. We felt that we had done a lot of study and a lot of background research on these before March eighteenth, we've done even more, and that's reflected in the thirty-eight, thirty-seven-page report that I've provided to you. Again, just reiterating that we are implementing a conference of plan that council adopted. This was all but, pretty much a mandate for us to move ahead with. And it's not just Roanoke, a lot of cities are doing this. When you go to the planning conferences and other conferences that I do at the national level, it's what everybody's talking about, how can we riddle ourselves of this exclusionary zoning that ultimately has harmful effects to us as cities? So, again, I'll just, we moderated our approach, it is not, it is not extreme at all, when we compare to ourselves to what Charlottesville did, what Arlington did, and what Alexandria did. They basically applied these kind of across the board, and they were looking at, you know, six and twelve units citywide. Ours was much more moderated, and it was graduated across the different density of districts. So, you know, again, when it boils down to it, the worst, the worst, or the most that we would get at, that we're projecting is forty per year, that's not enough. We've got to look at, well, okay, if that's, if we're really serious about addressing our housing shortage, we need to see how we're performing, see what our development outcomes are over the next year or two, and make, probably make even more adjustments. Because we know, we know from our own experience, that the density that you allow and the density you get are pretty divergent. I mean, when we look at the most, we got to forty percent in some districts. You know, if we allow this density, we're only getting forty percent. So you know you got to allow a little bit more to get the results that you're looking for. So, that is my presentation, and I will be here to answer questions and have some further discussion.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I'll refer to my colleagues, any questions or thoughts, comments? Chris Patrick.
Chris, thank you very much, and to Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, thank you all for what is a really good job. I really liked the depth of it, I like understanding that we're trying to change something that was put in place so long ago by people that thought differently than we do today, that it was about time to get to the quote-unquote "redlining" part in Roanoke, Virginia. And Frank, I won't accuse you of doing that in your business, I wouldn't do that. But I guess this is a common sense project that makes a lot of sense. I'm disappointed in the public input, I looked at the numbers at each meeting, I guess people look at this kind of like watching paint dry. It doesn't excite them, but it can affect them. But the way you did the outreach, obviously, we tried hard, and with the media, you covered your bases really well. And I think all of us know, I'm chairman of the Predatory Community Center right now, every time I go to a meeting down there, the blight is terrible, but it's in all four quadrants of the city, it's not like it's in one place. And ultimately, we have got to address that. I'm not smart enough to know how, but it has a very bad impact on people, and I know a lot of this is Section Eight, and there are people making a lot of money off poor people, which I don't agree with. But the big picture is, this is the kind of thing a city is supposed to do. And the comprehensive manner in which the planning commission has looked at this and studied it really makes a lot of sense to me. I guess I really only have two questions, and maybe Mr. Spencer can answer, is, are there political implications for us? Do we need to consider waiting until some other cases are decided before we just go headlong into making the changes that are suggested to what we've already adopted? Or, did we go far enough as a community? And what I'm hearing from you is, we probably did not, but that we're doing it in a moderate fashion, which is kind of the Roanoke way. But, you know, we were a hundred thousand in the nineteen fifty census in Roanoke, to those of you who don't know. Roanoke has had a tough time, and it's primarily because of the independent city concept and the Commonwealth, which I think is a master failure. And as we talk to- And as we talked to some of the folks from Medmont recently, we don't have a lot of choice in some of the decisions we have to make if we're gonna make sure taxes don't skyrocket, and we can't provide the services that the city is expected to provide. So, this is the kind of thing we have to do. Uh, and I would hope that the, the best that we can do is start right here and do what you said, and that is keep absolute watch on it, so that if we need to do better and we need to add more, then we need to do that. Uh, I don't like being at forty percent, uh, that I want Roanoke to be a leader, not a follower. Um, and in that regard, um, I commend you and ask that you, um, and I won't be here, so I don't have to worry about it. Because you all need to make sure that the current folks who will be elected in the future understand the significance of this and how it affects the quality of life and the quality of our neighborhoods. And in a manner of speaking, um, make sure we move it a little quicker than what you might be recommending here. But I want you to know, I'll be watching, because I love Roanoke and I want to see us do the very best that we can. And I commend you all for getting this started on what probably, uh, should have been done a long time ago. Thank you, Mayor.
If I, if I could just comment on one thing you said about people getting involved. Uh, we can provide the opportunity, uh, and that's important, and, 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 and people took advantage of that. Um, and again, you know, it was dispersed, diffused around the city. Uh, I will, and I, I, I forget whether you were on council at the time, but, but in two thousand five, we adopt, we wrote, we wrote every, every word in the zoning ordinance over. We adopted entirely new, uh, ordinance. We adopted an entirely new map. Everything changed. Everything changed. And we had one person show up, the, uh, a lawyer show up at the public hearing.
And that's the way it is, and you have to know, as a city employee, uh, that will be the case. You know, people tend to get upset after the fact, not before, even though you try to, to tell. And, and I'm too old to remember whether I was on council or not, Chris.
I think you were here, man.
You're gonna lay that one on me, aren't you, Mayor? Well, if I did the right thing, I'm okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh. Okay, well, let me, uh, Ms. Trish Wright-Bohr, you know, next.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you, Mr. Chittam. I really appreciate your, your work and, and, and the whole team for all the work that you've done. Because, you know, I was very apprehensive after, you know, the lawsuit, as we all were. And, um, you've answered a lot of questions I had written down, you know, one of the biggest concerns from the community. And then I flipped over a couple of pages, and you had already listed them out, um, and the considerations. But, um, do, do you think that there would be an opportunity to go back to the community and, and share with them the considerations, or have you already done that? Just so that they're aware that you are addressing their concerns and the things that were brought forward to them?
Well, that was the purpose of the, of the, the report, and, 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 and so there, we will be, we have posted that and make that available. We're gonna do a e-blast and, 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 you know, have people, if they have questions or comments about it, they, they can write in or reach out to us and, and about specific questions. But, but the, the, the purpose of, of what we've been doing all along is, we heard you. We heard you. We heard the concerns, and we've tried to respond to them in writing where we can be accountable for them. And, and so, um, we, we do not have any meetings planned. If somebody wants to, uh, we, we have met with individuals. If, 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 if a group or a set of individuals or one person wants to meet with me, I'm avail, I will go. I will, I will say yes. I'll be there and go to, go to talk with people. But we, but we, you know, we have had an extensive engagement process that, that, uh, this, this council complimented us on, um, and, and, you know, we are coming back with essentially, um, in, in terms of the substance of the amendments, uh, the same thing that was a result of that, that engagement process. So, we don't have any, we don't have any, uh, meetings scheduled, but we certainly will go to meetings, go and go meet with individuals and groups if, if requested.
And I appreciate that. I, I know that you can schedule the meetings, and people may or may not come. But, and, and it's certainly up to you all, but I do think it is important that maybe we do try to schedule one or two meetings so that we can say we did make an attempt and that, that, you know, we, we are trying to, to reach the community to make sure that they know. Because I think that's what we hear, and unfortunately, you, you may not hear it, but we will hear that we didn't, we don't know, we don't understand what's going on. These are major considerations, and you all have done a really good job to address them. And I appreciate that. I just think that we need to do whatever we can to make sure that, um, that the community i- is aware of it. And with that being said, I, I don't know that you can do anything beyond that, but I would ask that if we could figure out another way aside from posting it. Because unfortunately, that has been our challenge all along, is trying to disseminate and get information out to the community, because no matter what you do, they say, well, we didn't know. But, but we can make that attempt, and I think that's, that's all I'm saying. And, and certainly, I want to thank the, the commission, all of you, uh, you know, Mr., uh, Chairman, you guys, you don't know how important it is, the work that you do, um, that, the research, you know, you ha- you listen to all of the concerns, you decipher them, you make really good decisions, and then you make the recommendations for us. Your work is important for us. It is important because it helps us make really good, sound decisions. And so, we depend on you so much, and I just thank you for your time and your efforts on the planning commission. It's a lot of work, and I just want you to know that, that we're truly grateful for that. But I think that's all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor. I think they, uh, Mr. Chittam addressed all the questions that I had. Very thorough presentation, just a one recommendation that we get out to the public at least one more time.
All right, let me go to the vice mayor. He, uh, was following. I recognize him following, Mr. Trish.
Thank you, and I, I agree with you, Trish. I, I think this is a really extensive report, and I really encourage people to read it. Um, for those who really want to dive deep, I think the references you have in here, I would add to that, the color of law, that just shows the history of redlining and how exclusionary, single-family home, um, zoning, was in part designed for that purpose. I think the more we know our history and how that's affected Roanoke, the better informed we are as citizens and why, why these sorts of changes are really critical for consideration. Um, I live in Old Southwest. Um, I live on a block, uh, from Fourth to Fifth Street. There are eight houses. They're all single-family homes. I would say that six of them are multifamily units within single-family homes. And there is plenty of parking. So, I, I will push back on that argument. I don't, I, I think your point about capacity is, is important. One of the arguments I've heard, and I'm, I'm disappointed, I see pictures posted on social media about infill, but there's no reference to where that is. It could be photoshopped, for all I know. So, if people are gonna post pictures from other communities where this has happened, I think it's, it shows integrity if you show where this is and how it's detrimental. Don't just post random pictures up there. And I would also say, all of us on council are very accessible. I would, I would appreciate it personally if, instead of people tagging us or criticizing us about, um, where we supposedly stand on this issue, reach out to us and talk with us about it. Ask questions. Uh, we're all accessible. Um, I think this has become adversarial in a way that it doesn't need to be, because we all care about our city. Uh, one of the housing studies that's not mentioned in here is the, uh, Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission Housing Study that included the city of Roanoke. And in that, um, it not only alluded to what you said and what Bev said about the population hasn't changed since the fifties, essentially. And ninety per- ninety-two percent of the housing stock, this is in twenty nineteen, ninety-two percent of the housing stock in the city of Roanoke is single-family. If we are exclusionary and are determined to just keep single-family home, homes as single-family dwellings, our housing crisis becomes catastrophic. So, we have to think differently about this, and I agree that this is a very moderate approach. Forty units over a year, um, is, is not much. I do hear the concerns about infill. I think what you've shared in relation to the corner lots and the interior lots and making sure, especially in neighborhoods that have unique characteristics, I would not want to see, I mean, Old Southwest is already a blend of units. And, and some would argue, you know, some of them need to be taken down. But I would argue that this really helps us focus on blight reduction. You know, it's really substantial in southeast, but it's substantial in other parts of the city, too. And I guess one of my questions is, um, there's been some fear expressed about LLCs, property companies that come into communities to buy up properties and then convert them, but then don't retain them, and just essentially add to the blight rather than reducing it. I know when we adopted this, I recommended that we really watch this closely to see what we're noticing. Can you talk a little bit more about, I know you've mentioned that there are two projects that have come forward. Can you talk a little bit more about how we can manage and monitor this, especially in relation to slum lords, um, these property companies that buy up properties and then may or may not do anything with them? Because I think that helps address the blight situation.
Well, uh, Vice Mayor Cab, I, I think that we, we need to be careful that we don't ask too much of zoning, because we really don't, um, get into the ownership situation as, as, as we noted. However, I will say that when we talk about LLCs, a very top-notch developer purchased a piece of property, um, in the name of an LLC that they just set up. So, you'll see, you know, three oh nine Campbell LLC. That's just what they do. And that's somebody who lives down the street from us, right? And, and so, it's difficult for us to tell, uh, other than the kind of looking at the, at the, at the mailing address to see if it's local or not, uh, as to, as to which LLCs are the good ones or, and which ones are the local ones even, or, and, and, but the, with the, the, I, I think, you know, the, in terms of private equity companies that are just buying up, uh, you know, uh, lots of, of, of properties, we, none of us really know how to respond to that, other than just treat them like the, the way, that, you know, stay on them from a code enforcement standpoint to make sure that they, uh, comply with their rental inspection program, uh, which does apply in, in the Belmont neighborhood and Fallon, um, and, and, and be able to respond to building maintenance issues and, uh, to the extent that we can. Now, one big problem comes when you try to find, uh, and hold them accountable, uh, if they're out of town. We have, we, we still have not yet figured out how to, um, uh, you know, get, get summons served in other localities, um, and, and, but we are able to, if they have an S, um, uh, SCC filing, we can often find who the registered agent is, and we do that. And, and that's how we try to reach out to, uh, these property owners. I'm not sure that answers your question, because we don't have a good handle on that yet. Uh, that's a new thing that all localities are kind of dealing with. Uh, I will say that we've had, uh, a majority of our problems with locals that own property and don't take care of it. And they live right down the street. And, and, uh, so, um, I think there's plenty of that to, to, to go around, e- even when we can hold them accountable and know where they are. So, it's a challenge, for sure.
Well, thank you for that. I, um, just had a couple other questions. Um, I appreciated your comments about the, the range of housing and how people who can afford a higher rate of rental, um, are kind of saturating the market in terms of where they're renting or buying. In a recent conversation with, uh, the homeless assistance team, one of the challenges they're finding right now that's contributing to homelessness are evictions. And these evictions are due to people not being able to afford the higher rents. So, to the degree that we can create more housing, uh, for lower-income persons, and it's challenging to get the lower-income housing tax credits for developers because of the risks that they take in doing that, um, we need to think about, and I think this helps address this, um, in the city. I guess the last question I have is, we have some really great organizations locally that are helping increase our capacity for housing. If you drive down Bullet Avenue, you can see what Habitat is doing. You can see what Restoration Housing is doing related to permanent supportive housing. I think this creates more opportunities for those kinds of models, which we need more of. What within this, um, with the emergence of our land bank, I know the city is working to, and has worked with the General Assembly to create a pathway for, uh, properties that, um, owe back taxes, that are at foreclosure, rather than going on the tax cell to just be bought by someone and remain blighted. They can be transferred to the land bank. How do you see this supporting potential transfer of some properties to the land bank for rehab?
I, 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 I think, but both of your points are, um, valuable to our conversation here, because the, the zoning piece is, is within the context of a lot of other things that we are doing and, and need to do. Uh, and, and we, we start to think about our housing, uh, program as a system. Um, and, and, you know, we're, this is one piece, again, to get out of the way, uh, if you will, for, for good things to happen. Uh, we, we need to work with the land bank. Uh, we have set up the, uh, the Affordable Workforce Housing Loan Fund, where we provide, uh, gap financing for developers that develop a certain percentage of, uh, affordable housing in their, in their units. We had one, uh, ta- one developer take advantage of that. When we look at, when we look at, um, our developer picture, uh, and, and their ability to develop, uh, housing, um, using all the different, um, uh, tools out there for financing, and, and, and increasing the number of developers that know how to use low-income housing tax credits, uh, both the, uh, the competitive version and the buy-right version, um, we need, we need, we've got some really good developers that know how to do that, but we need more. And we, we also need to work on the, the, uh, point at, kind of like we did with, uh, accessory dwelling units, look at patterns for those, for, for buildings that are, have two, three, four, small apartment buildings, because they're, uh, uh, very, people don't, they don't know how to develop them anymore where they were very common prior to when we had zoning, because they're, you'll, you'll see them on a corner in, in Raleigh Court, for example, uh, right in the middle of the neighborhood. And, and, uh, but that art, um, has been lost. Banks don't know how to finance it. So, we've got to work a lot of, um, uh, fronts from not only getting out of the way, but also, uh, facilitating, uh, the development of, uh, this middle housing. I did provide in your report, you'll see, you see that we are doing a lot of single dwellings. Seventy-eight, uh, so far this year, over ninety, approaching a hundred last year, um, and, and almost zero middle housing. Um, and, and so, for, well, you know, I mean, there's reason for that. There's nowhere to put it, right? And so, we're trying to get out of the way there, and then, uh, but we know we've got to push on the other end to try to get developer competency. And again, where are they gonna put it? That's where the land bank can come in. We can, we, we need to go out, we need to inventory properties. We need to, uh, look at, uh, in particular leftovers from the, uh, Thirteenth Street Southeast Project, the Tenth Street Northwest Project and those properties. Could they be transferred to the, to the land bank and, and made available for, uh, uh, new development? And, and kind of create that, that circle, uh, that, uh, you know, close the loop, if you will, uh, of, of, uh, of development, so that we can get some of these, uh, these compatible neighborhoods, units built. So, but that, that's, you know, that's kind of, we, we, we've got, we've got so much more to do. It's almost overwhelming. But this is a very, very important first step for us to get out of our own way, if you will.
Thank you, and I just, just, just so that we can- Thank you. And I just, just so that we continue to be aware about design and, you know, enhancing our unique neighborhoods, not making them look like a mishmash of...
Yeah, I think, you know, we have one developer, Restoration Housing, Isabel Thornton, who can do just a few units, but she will take a, you know, rather large dwelling in Belmont, for example, and convert it into multiple units. And she simply could not make that happen with a single dwelling unit. And indeed, I mean, and, you know, Habitat, they require heavy subsidy to do the most expensive form of housing out there, which is a single, a single unit. So we need a blend. And so we do, you know, the city does more through your funding, pass through of CDPG money and home funds to encourage affordable housing in Roanoke than anybody, anyone entity. So that's part of, that's part of it. How we use those funds may change in the future. We need to look at how we do that.
Thank you. And I want to thank the Planning Commission, too, for your hard work and your research on this, the level of engagement you all have. I really appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chittam and your staff. I always have only great things for you guys because you guys have done a lot of research, a lot of work on this, and I love the report, going in and looking at what are a lot of the concerns that are coming out, and are they valid? And using facts and numbers and data to do that. I think a lot of folks think that urban planning is a little bit of voodoo, but it does mainly go around facts and what we see as patterns happening. And so I appreciate what your staff has done and the Planning Commission as well to get Roanoke where we are and making sure we're getting out of our own way, as you put it. I also wanted to note that, just like we just had the discussion about, this zoning is just a piece of the puzzle when it comes to affordability. And you already noted the other things that we're doing to try and get there, and we have more to do still. One of the things that came out in the first go-around, if you will, with this zoning was that a lot of groups said that, you know, nobody came to talk to them and that, you know, they didn't know what was happening. Since you guys have started this process again, have there been any of those groups that have actually reached out and asked for a meeting?
No.
And I would say that most of those folks, because I see on social media and I see who's in different groups, that they had known that this is happening, and still nobody has asked you for a meeting. So I think that gives us a bit of a sense of, you know, if it's, if it's so important and these things are worth a lawsuit, then why aren't they asking to talk about it with the zoning department, with us, and with our city staff? So I appreciate that answer and letting me know that, you know, I would have at least hoped that a couple of those groups would have done that by now. Other than that, I think everything is great. I just want to say that we need to be welcoming more neighbors into the Roanoke city. And this is the way we're going to do it, is by making sure that we stop being discriminatory and exclusionary with our zoning and we open it up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can tell there was a lot of work put in it. I'm sure there were sleepless nights. I'm sure the Planning Commission had a lot of sleepless nights when you first had to deal with this back in March. But I, too, want to thank you all for your hard work because you're volunteers. You don't get paid, and a lot is put on you for that. I did want to make a side note to the chairman in his comments of thanking the mayor for his service and referring to the vice mayor because he's running. But I also wanted to let you know I'm running, too. And I can feel those shoes. I am little in stature, small in feet, but I think I can do a pretty good job in sitting in the mayor's seat. And having said that, I'm going to move to Chris. I appreciate all that you've said, Chris, and I do support, and I did like the thought about Roanoke being a leader. I always think we should lead and not follow most times. I like the thoughts that came from the vice mayor. He filled in a lot of things that I was going to say, so I don't have to repeat it. One was with the land bank. I had a meeting just last week, or week before last, maybe before I went on vacation, to talk about the blight. So my questions were answered, and I won't repeat all that was said, but I was glad to know that we already have something on the books to address that and also to move some of that, hopefully, into the land bank. And that was, that was good to notice, just a matter of enforcing what you already have, then trying to recreate other things. I am very conservative. I believe in community engagement. And I believe the measure that we re-adopted to move forward, it did mention public meetings, that there would be additional meetings. So I have a little rub here with the public having to reach out back to you all and you saying no. But what have we done from the city side to reach back out to them to let them know additional meetings would be held? So with that said, I think that's just what Ms. Whiteboy said. We still need to do a little bit more in trying to reach back out. And I believe it was stated that doing your engagements, concerns, and recommendations were given. Now, I don't know how much truth it is. It's neither here nor there for me. But was said that they did give some insight, and none of that was used. I don't know whether it was disregarded or reported back to them why you didn't think that was necessary. I do think that the voices need to be heard. I will always keep saying that voices do matter. And we do, as taxpayers, we pay, you, you're a taxpayer, your salary comes from that. And so I think we owe that to the citizens if we are offering that service, to be open door, to be more approachable, to hear what they have to say. And if you do disagree, give them the reason behind the disagreement and not just say they're just not going to work, but why it will not work. If it's database-driven, use the data to say this is where we're coming from, but just not to say or appear to be, this is mine and I want it to go this way. The other thing is, I think one of my things I have concerns about is we talk about the redlining and the exclusionary zoning. I think some of that may come from realtors. When people are talking to them, that creates redlining, to me, discrimination, because they are helping you get into a different section of the city as well, instead of bringing you into other parts of the city based on who lives there or where the school zones are now. And it's like, well, no, you don't want to live over there because it's a high crime area. I had a person reach out to me who was looking over in inner city on Grayson, wanting to know, is this a safe street to live on? And I told them, yes, it is. They were saying, well, we heard, that kind of thing. So I was, I even shared where I knew people, friends of mine, who live in that location, in that area, and that it was a safe place, and that they could even check the data to see the crime stats, to see if it was, if it was quote-unquote to them, what numbers they were looking for if it was a safe community. The other thing is, I think we have to look at, when I looked at, you sent, when you gave me this copy, I had already marked up my other copy, so I'm still trying to figure out what changes you did in this one versus what was left out in this one. And I have not had enough time to really look at all of that, but I think I may just have to just leave it at that because it may have been in here, the questions that I had. Here may have already been answered. So I'm just going to stop there and thank you for your time and all your efforts in bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Moon Reynolds. I think just to respond, and certainly, we never dismiss any of the input that we get. I will tell you that we do have disagreements, and if somebody tells us, don't you do this? When we have a conference of plan that, adopted by city council to do this, then I think we get to a point where we heard you, and that's as far as we can go. And we have a fundamental divergence of interest, if you will. And so I think that's inherent in there. But I'll also say that we did indeed moderate our proposal. When you compare it to Charlottesville, when you compare to us to Arlington and what they did, and when you compare to Alexandria, those in Virginia that have happened to go a few months in front of us. We did moderate our proposal, and as Mr. Fitzpatrick said, you know, the kind of the Roanoke way is to be rather conservative. And so I think we did that. We did hear people. We did hear people. We acknowledged. We had a frequently asked questions section on our website where we did respond to different concerns. And sometimes people would express concerns that really didn't have anything to do here. They were frustrated with something else, and I get it. And, because it may be an enforcement issue, or it may be some other related issue. The issue with redlining, so redlining is, was, was a, really a financial situation where there were maps that the insurance industry would use and banks would use to, you know, kind of write off neighborhoods. Now, in Roanoke, those were many of the neighborhoods in northwest, but also in Belmont and Fallon. Those were redlined as well. So here's the thing about redlining. The, not all, not all neighborhoods that were redlined were predominantly black.
Right.
But all predominantly black neighborhoods were redlined.
Right.
Right? And so that's the, that's the thing about, and it's that pattern over and over. The thing where you're talking about that realtors engage in is called steering.
Yes.
And so, and so that's something, you know, it's not a regulation necessarily, but I think their code of ethic says, don't you dare do that.
Right, but they do.
It is a violation of fair housing.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And also, when you mentioned redlining, it's still, it's subtle now because the insurance company is doing. What zip code you're in, that's still a redlining to me. If you're in a 24012, 2416, 2417, or even part of 2413, depending on where you live, your insurance may drive that, and people will move because, or try to find a place to live where the insurance companies will give you a lesser rate, pay a lesser rate than where you would pay, even though it's still a nicer neighborhood. Or, I know what my question was. Hypothetically, when we talk about the infield lot, over there on Nineteenth Street, for instance, over in the Farland Lakes, there is, over there near where Norris Drive, over there where Top Hill, there's a lot of vacant land there. And with this, this particular, when these amendments come into effect by right, those landowners could sale or have their properties developed, and that's where you could see some of the multiple dwellings placed into those spaces. Correct me if I'm...
That's, that's correct. And I believe the property you're referring to is the Heritage Acres site.
Yes, the Heritage Acres, yes.
Which has probably 150, it's 150 lots in there that have just sat vacant for years. And they, you know, they have, it's a forest with an old decrepit road running through it. And so they could be, they could be, that could be a significant development there. If, there's a lot of ifs in that because the infrastructure was put in in 1975 or something like that, and nothing has been done to it ever since. So that would, they would require significant upgrades. And that's probably what's standing in the, that's why it sits vacant today, is there's very little profitable use for that land as it sits today, as it's divided up today, as all that you would need to do to rebuild all the infrastructure that's in there, curb gutter, sidewalk, pavement would have to be completely redone, water, sewer line, stormwater.
Where I'm referring to mainly is the Nineteenth Street and Andrews Road. There are several corner lots. Those are the ones I was, I was thinking of where they could go in based on that and read the buy right.
Sure.
And the only concern I have with this buy right is, and we've had it, they've come before council, is because the public does not know anything about it because we are not required to give them notice. And so they find out about it when it's happening or has happened. And I don't know how, even though it may not be a requirement, but it's a courtesy kind of thing, I would think, when permits are being given, whatever, when it affects, it's going to have a significant impact in a neighborhood that the property owner should know about it, be aware that it's coming, whether it's through Neighborhood Services, I don't know. But I just think, again, we should be a little bit more kinder to our neighbors than, than just throwing things in or allowing things just to go in because it's by right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sanchez-John.
Good morning. I just want to thank the Planning Commission for the incredible work that they have been doing and that they will continue to do. And Mr. Chittam, I just want to thank you for all it's been, to you and your staff for always being available to answer all our questions over and over. So I just want to tell you that I agree with Ms. Whiteboy. I believe that we should have some additional meetings. But what I would like to see is for those meetings to be held at night, whether we have one in northwest, another one in southwest, and one of the schools, to keep the public participation. So that way they don't say, oh, well, you know, we couldn't go because it was at noon, which I have an issue with meetings being held at 12 and 1:30 in the afternoon, when most people are not able to attend. So I think we should give the public a shot in participation and have those meetings in the evening. So, thank you.
All right.
Oh, yeah, I just had one follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chittam, we did have a lot, you did a great job. It's a lot of changes. And I was even telling Dr. Patton, you know, we have a lot to process and not a lot of time. But I'm thinking now about next steps and a follow-up. Do you know when that might be? And also, Mr. Spencer, do you think that this is solid, that we're in good standing? I'd like to hear some feedback from you based on the modifications that were made and all the work that Mr. Chittam and his team have done. Do you think this is, this is a good place to be?
Yes, we believe we're in a very good place. If you'll look up on the screen, is, as far as public hearings, is kind of an outline of what is legally required next. We've got a public hearing before the Planning Commission coming up on August 12 at 1:30. And then we'll wait because of the magnitude of the changes and hearing from council. Council asked that we...
Oh, I see it now. I could barely see it.
Instead of doing that back-to-back, that we come back on September 16 at 7:00 PM for the other public hearing. Now, a couple of things, if I can. As I understand, Chris, we reached out to neighborhood associations and invited, if they wish for us to come speak on this, that we were more than willing to go speak? Did we do that?
Have you done that?
If we can make sure that we do that.
Okay.
Well, and I think I got Molly in the back, and she's hearing that. So we'll make sure that we do that effort in the meantime. Also, we're doing media blasts on a regular basis to try to continue to inform the public. From a legal perspective, the approach that we've followed on this litigation, and I think I've told council and I'll tell the public, is we thought we had a defensible position, but it is easier, more efficient, and cheaper to go back through this process again. In fact, last week, City of Fairfax just did the same thing when they were looking to amend their code. They went back and said, listen, rather than fight it in the courts, now Arlington's fighting it in the courts and anticipating that it'll take about three years to resolve. We're taking what I believe is a more efficient, less expensive approach in addressing it this way. Is it somewhat, quite frankly, embarrassing to say, oh, we're going back just to make sure we're dotting i's and crossing t's? Yes, it's a little bit, but I think it's much more efficient to do that. And we're giving the public another opportunity to voice their concerns. We have asked if you have a change that you wish to have, please make it in writing so that we can address it and so that the Planning Commission, so this council can see exactly what you're proposing, other than, I don't like this, or please do it. The other one we've heard. The other one we've heard, quite frankly, is, hey, try this in other neighborhoods, not ours, but as you've heard, we're doing a more moderate approach, so that we can see what happens in Charlottesville, so that we can see what happens in Alexandria, other Virginia communities, that have actually greater density than we do. So I think that we're following a moderate approach, that we're reaching out to our community to give greater input, and to be more aware, by using media blasts, this is a wonderful piece of work, I commend staff, what they've done, it shows the resources utilized, and so that if after this, there is an additional challenge, again, I think that we've looked at a lot of the concerns, we've looked at traffic, we've looked at parking, we've looked at utilities, and what's the impact, the anticipated impact, and then we've had something else, which is very important, since March eighteenth, we've actually had an ordinance, where we can see the impact, and what has the impact been, we'll have that, and we'll continue to monitor it. I can't remember which member of council brought it up, but it was absolutely brilliant, please monitor this, and come back after adoption, to let us know how it's working. And I think that's also important, not only for council, but for staff and our residents, to know, is this accomplishing the goal that it set out to accomplish?
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Spencer, I know there's only thirty-five, forty people in this room, but we have hundreds and hundreds of citizens watching us, and so they were able to hear that explanation, and I think that was very helpful for me, and should be for them. Thank you. I'm sorry.
So, if I could respond to your question about follow-up, we will, I'm hearing that we want to have a couple more meetings in the evening at some point, just so we can have time to get notice out about, we're probably looking beyond the Planning Commission meeting next week, so we're probably looking at the latter weeks of August, maybe early September. We will have those meetings, we will bring the results of those meetings back to you before you're considering these, and we will put that, include that in the staff report to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chittam, I think that will make us, I mean, it makes our lives a lot easier, and when we have to make those tough decisions, we can make them, because we feel good about them.
Understood, and if I could just add one more thing, if you go to planroanoke.org/zeloning, you'll get to this page, that has the, you know, we're putting updates, the version of the report and this briefing that you got this morning is already posted on that website, so everybody has access to that, and can download that. We will send out an email blast later this afternoon, or tomorrow morning, to let people know that it's available, and they can go download this report at their leisure, and kind of work through it, you know, if they're really interested.
If they want to see it, it's there. That's what we have to do, that's all I'm saying, is just, you know, make it available, and it's up to them, whether they want to engage or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me say that I've been around here for twenty years, the thing that I have difficulty with is finding out, determining when the community is aware. We do more PR now than we've ever done in the past. We get words out, we're having meetings, we can have meetings in the afternoon, you can have meetings at night, you have meetings in the neighborhood, you're still going to get tagged that I wasn't aware of that. Now, we have these sessions here at council, that was, I mean, if anybody didn't know what was going on then, and saw the last time we talked, we approved these zoning, zoning, and the thing that I made note of is what Councilwoman Paulson said, has anybody, since we published this, has anybody said or called and asked about a meeting? The citizens have so much responsibility, they got so much responsibility, it just can't be all to the staff, you know, if you live in an area, you know that certain things are happening, then you have some responsibility to follow that up. So, I can appreciate what we're trying to do, and what my colleagues have said, but I also say, as a citizen, you have a responsibility to find out what's going on, and it's out there, I mean, it's out there now, more than it's ever been, in terms of what we're doing with the meetings, so, I want to thank you all again, as I said earlier, for what your commitment, your work and doing, and I look at Wayne, and I see Wayne's always going, I see him out in the community, doing things, being there, I've seen him work, and I'm saying, how do people not know that this is going on in this street, on that corner? But sometimes I think they just want to write, I know to me, the mayor, I want to complain about this, I want to say this, that's what I get, they in here don't know, they just want to indirectly write me and say they complain about it, and I'm just, you know, at a certain point, I'm going to turn it back on them, and say, it's up to you, it's up to you, they spoon-feed you on everything, you know it's there, look at it, find out what's going on in your community, where you live. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, unless we have anything else, Wayne, thank you, thank Catherine, and you all for what you're doing, Chris, thank you, and Smart, I want to give you a chance to say anything else, or you, the commissioner, you all have anything to say?
Kevin? Sarah? Yes, sir, I think we'll wrap it up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Smartest people.
Dr. Patton, you have any comments, anything you'd like to?
I have no comments, I think that the planning department, which is led by Mr. Chittam, did an excellent job, he and his teams worked on this presentation, to come back to you for weeks, he and I have sat down and tweaked and milked, and I'm proud of him and his team and the work that they've done, and to include that, a part of this team's effort to really communicate with the public, and provide information to them, and even if it's repeat, going back out, they're willing to do that, and have done it in the past. Thank you, Mayor, and Ms. Spencer.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, a real recess, and adjourn, thank you all for coming out, Smart, and everybody, and Ms. Glenn, and Mr. Barry, thank you all for what you do, and Ms. Clark, thank you, and you all take care, and have a good day, thank you. We're going to adjourn for a few moments, and then we'll come back, at council, about five minutes.